Out of this.
Sometimes you just got it, man.
All right, in my ears as an educator and facilitator of trainings, you listen for the lull and then you talk. And so, thank you for providing a lull. Welcome. We're so glad to have you all for our school board meeting this evening. This is one of our favorite meetings of the year, just because we get to celebrate scholars, artists, educators, conveniently with Educator Appreciation Week. So, we're so glad to have you all here. I will call this meeting to order by beginning with a roll call vote. Joe?
Here.
Corby?
Here.
John?
Here.
Christopher?
Here.
And I am here as well. We do have a quorum. Corby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. To help ensure that we're centering our board work around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's Equity Framework and the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of the agenda. Joe, would you please read for us this evening?
Yes. The VASD Educational Equity Statement is, "In the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity." And the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement reads, "There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chunk Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand."
Thank you. More than I invite you to glance over the rest of the agenda, and I'd actually like to make a motion to make one change to the agenda as printed. I'd like to move that we shift what is currently in Board Consent, Part B, the On-Site Healthcare Clinic Proposal, and just elevate that back into Board Action. We're going to have a presentation from our team about that, and I'd like to bring that back into Board Action, probably as Item A, since it will flow a little bit nicer to bring that to A, and then we'll do OB-12 as B. Any other changes, suggestions? So, I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Christopher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Corby. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda with the amendment as presented, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We got the business settled, so let's shift our focus to our Distinguished Art Awards for 2025. So, Dr. Clarity, I'm going to turn it over to you and our amazing art department team of educators to celebrate some art scholars tonight.
Absolutely. All right, good evening, everyone. We are extremely excited, as President Murphy stated, and we'll just go and say it is our favorite night to be able to recognize our art scholars. And part of the presentation, if you were able to do the gallery walk earlier on today, just the way our artists were able to describe their work, their personal connection to what they have either drawn or painted, and really just being able to take their thoughts that they have formulated within their mind, whatever inspired it, and bring it to the world of art, is just something that just continues to amaze me on a year-to-year basis. There's that piece of me that wonders, like, where did my art gene go? Because I don't have the talent to be able to do what our amazing scholars do, and that's okay. That's part of who we are, that each of us are something uniquely different in what we do and what we bring to the table. I also want to say this, when you look at the artists out there, and previously you saw us read our, I heard Member Haynes read our Equity Framework, you see that come to life in our art as well. You see it come to life in what they've both been able to put in front of us, the way that they tell the stories, the diversity that you see from our winners, and just the true authentic connection to the Verona School District, to our broader community, and our ultimate goal of helping every student thrive in a diverse global society. So, when I talk about this, it's just not a day for us. It's truly deep and meaningful, and knowing that this is part of a legacy that we plan to continue long into the future. It was here before I got here. We wanted to make sure that it was elevated, but we want this to be part of who the Verona School District is, and it's because of our scholars that are out there that hopefully come back and maybe be in these seats as teachers, as parents, as educators that are bringing this, continuing to bring this world to life. So, I'm going to stop talking because I get emotionally caught up in it, because it's just so finely important to all of us, but I humbly just want to say, on behalf of our full Verona School District, our staff, our community, thank you to our scholars who have presented, who have received an award today, and thank you for everything that you bring to the world of education and making our experience better every single day. I also want to thank our amazing staff and our leaders who continue to guide our youth. You know, the magic of education doesn't happen at the superintendent table, it doesn't happen at the board table, it happens in our classroom, and our classroom is where that magic really comes to life in the form. And today, we'll celebrate that through the form of art. So, thank you to our staff as well for all you do in bringing our scholars before us today. So, with that, I'm getting ready to, just for process, I'm going to read a quick paragraph around each of the award winners. At that time, that scholar will come up and turn to the crowd with their piece of work, and as I'm reading their paragraph behind them, and then we'll go through with all the scholars today. We will then come and receive an award towards the end. We want to make sure you recognize you and your art first, and then do the award presentation after that. Okay? So, our first winner today is going to be Ryder, excuse me, Ryder Hetzel. Ryder is a fourth grader at Glacier Ridge Elementary. "As Ms. Finer began thinking about all the deserving students at Glacier Ridge, Ryder instantly came to mind as a top selection. He is the embodiment of one who artistically exudes exceptional character qualities. He is eager to learn, attentive, highly respectful of adults and peers, responsible, and very mature. Ryder is also a leader in school, a student council member, and one who cheers on peers and is met with admiration by others. His response to situations is a reasoned, thoughtful, and logical approach, yet he has a great sense of humor and sees the fun and joy in situations. Coveted yet rare qualities in one individual. Then there is art skills, attention to detail, high-quality craftsmanship, and a willingness to experiment with all media and styles, and helpful to fellow artists. Ms. Finer feels very fortunate to have had Ryder as her student for so many years, and is looking forward to one last year with him. Congratulations to Ryder." Our next winner is Edward Kenny. Edward is a 10th grader at Verona High School. We've known, as our instructor writes, "I have known Eddie since his first days at VHS. From day one, he has been coming to the art department with in-progress drawings, ready for show and tell, seeking feedback, and looking to build his art skills. Eddie burns through sketchbooks as fast as he can get his hands on them. He is an insatiable creator. I chose Eddie for the Distinguished Art Scholar Award because I'm so proud of how he yearns to improve, how readily he soaks up and absorbs any and all feedback he can get, and how much he pushes himself to grow. It's been a joy to watch Eddie's evolution as an artist during his first two years at VHS. I look forward to watching his trajectory as he enters the second half of his time here, and then as he heads out into the world at large. Thank you for always bringing your eager smile to the art department. Enjoy. Congratulations to Eddie." Next, we are going to have Nakamui Humunga. Nakamui is a fifth grader at Stoner Prairie Elementary. "It's a joy to have her in art class every week, and I always look forward to seeing what she creates. The thought and care and attention to detail she puts into all her work is admirable. Naka is always up for a new artistic challenge and enjoys working with a variety of different art materials. During every art class, her willingness to help and encourage those around her is evident. I'm excited to see where Naka's artistic drive and talent will take her in her future. Congratulations." Our next award winner is Trevor James Washington Swallow. Trevor is a fourth grader at Sugar Creek Elementary. "I'm honored to select Trevor to represent Sugar Creek Elementary Schools in this year's Distinguished Honor Scholar Award. Trevor's unwavering passion for the arts, coupled with a natural enthusiasm that inspires both his peers and teachers alike, allows his art to shine through every project he undertakes. His willingness to take creative risks shows his commitment to growing as an artist and his desire to push the boundaries of his learning. His infectious joy in creating is evident, and his eagerness to try new things. In addition to his artistic talent, Trevor is a kind and helpful classmate, and he often assists his peers when they encounter challenges in their artwork, sharing tips and offering encouragement. His enthusiasm not only makes him a standout student, but also a role model for his fellow classmates, inspiring them to embrace their creative journeys. Congratulations to you, Trevor." Our next winner is Seraphina Ray. Seraphina is a fifth grader at Verona Area National School. She was chosen for the Distinguished Art Scholar Award due to her exceptional creativity, unwavering dedication, and impressive growth throughout the year. Seraphina not only has a natural eye for color, but also quickly masters new techniques with ease. Her technical skill is set, skill set is strong, yet is her passion for exploring different mediums and artistic styles that truly sets her apart. Beyond her innate talent, Seraphina consistently goes above and beyond to refine her work. Easily accepts constructive feedback and is always excited to tackle new challenges. Working with her over the past three years has been an absolute pleasure, and I'm excited to see her continue to evolve as an artist. Congratulations to Seraphina. Our next winner is Jackson O'Shea. Jackson is a third grader at Cornellis Charter School. We are honored to select him for this year's Distinguished Honor Scholar. It is absolutely joy to have him in art class, and it's been a pleasure to watch him learn and grow over the years. Jackson was chosen for his award not only for artistic talent, but also for his hard work and determination. His passion for the arts shine through in everything he creates. He frequently brings his sketchbook and marches to class, eager to share the work he has been practicing outside of school. Beyond art, Jackson enjoys sports, spending time with his family and friends, and being a proud big brother. His dedication and enthusiasm make him a truly standout student. Congratulations to Jackson. Our next winner is Grayson Dulo. Grayson is a fourth grader at New Century Charter School. It is rare to come across a student who demonstrates both dedication to their work and genuine commitment to the people and environment around them. Grayson is one such student. As a passionate artist, I've had the privilege of watching him immerse himself deeply in his projects, essentially showing a focus and determination to refine his skills. What truly sets him apart, however, is his ability to balance this commitment with a innate desire to support and uplift those around him. Grayson often collaborates with peers, providing insightful feedback and innovative ideals, which helps elevate the work of others around him. We've had the opportunity to see that Grayson, and then Grayson. His joy, coupled with his positive attitude and dedication to both his craft and the people around him, make him a standout student. It is without hesitation that we recommend him for this recognition, confident in his contributions, both artistic and personal, will continue to make a lasting impact. Congratulations to Grayson. Our next winner is Nolan Bubbers. Nolan is a seventh grader at Savannah Oaks Middle School. Nolan is a trusted, dedicated artist. He works with an intense focus on the quality and craftsmanship of each of his pieces. He is always seeking advice on how to improve upon his work. Nolan is also a kind, respectful student who models responsible work habits. When the class is learning new material, Nolan participates well and often contributes to the dialogue. His peers look to him as a role model. Nolan has been a pleasure to work with these past two years, and I know he will continue to shine in the years to come. From Cecily Block. Our next winner is Lola Fortney. Lola is currently an eighth grader student at Badger Ridge Middle School. Her drawing of the crane is being recognized for the exceptional quality and control of her line work, as well as the intricate details and an expressive splash of color in her composition. A dedicated artist, Lola often spends her free time practicing her craft outside of school, drawing inspiration from the world around her. As she looks forward to high school, Lola is excited about the increased freedom and responsibility that comes with it. Outside of her artistic pursuits, she enjoys volleyball, showcasing her ability to balance her creative and athletic interests. This award is a testament to Lola's hard work and determination. I'm looking forward to seeing what the art she produces during her high school years. Congratulations to Lola. Our next winner is Juan Caseras. Juan is a fifth grade student at Country View Elementary. Juan was chosen for this award because he follows the country view, wildcat way. Expectations for being safe, being compassionate, and being a learner. Juan is creative and focused on the process of bringing his ideas to life with thoughtfulness and care. He shows great interest in project ideals and techniques, and demonstrates his learning without worrying about what others around him are doing. In our class, Juan is a quiet leader. Congratulations to Juan.
Take a moment. Yeah.
Say three words and I'll get it ready.
Yes, we'll let Dr. Clarity transition from all the speaking and get ready to present awards to all of our art scholars. So, art scholars, if you want to stand again and start to make your way maybe toward your art teacher, we'll take a few moments. If anyone needs a photo opportunity, feel free to move as well. And then we'll do a group photo outside afterwards. Perfect.
One of the board members. We're going to go in order that they're here on this, here in front of me, so we'll begin with Juan. Everybody. Nolan. Lola. Grayson. Ryder. Edward. Nakamui. Seraphina. Jackson.
Do you want to take? Thank you.
Trevor. Please give a round of applause to our.
So, we're going to head outside for a group photo, and if you would like to do other photos as well, we'll be right up here. I know. Yes. Thank you, everyone. This part is over. Our board meeting is continuing, but.
Got to go health time.
Right? It's all right. We'll do those things. Thank you. Thank you. I know. We have staff recognition. Yeah, we'll do that too. I know. I thought that was a good shot. Yeah. All right, we will continue on with our meeting. We do have some staff recognition as well. As you've heard us say on and off already, it is Educator Appreciation Week, and we do have another staff member, another award-winning staff member. We've been celebrating these almost every meeting, which just speaks to, again, the amazingness of what we have for educators in the district. So, Dr. Clarity, do you want to speak to our current award-winning teacher?
Absolutely. So, it's our honor to recognize Rachel Hunjati for Verona High School Chemistry Teacher. She is the winner of the Wisconsin Society of Science Teachers Frank Zerner New Teacher Scholarship. And so, we want to definitely recognize her. I think she may be at home watching, and I definitely want to congratulate her on the way that she continues a trend of really highly qualified staff here at the Verona School District that are award-winning staff, but we know that means that our students are receiving a world-class education because of the efforts of our students. So, congratulations to her, and congratulations to all the people that have supported her on her journey as well.
And I'm assuming with the new teacher scholarship that Rachel is one of our beginning educators in the district?
Newer.
I mean, so just that accolade, just highlighting, not only from the organization standpoint, from one of our educators too, right? Being early in their career and being able to achieve such amazing accolades, I think that speaks to the mentorship program we have, the supportive colleagues, and the amazing educators that we're able to continue to bring in at the beginning parts of their career. So, super excited about that as well. And congrats to Rachel.
Absolutely. As President Murphy stated, we are recognizing all of our educators as we do Educator Appreciation Week. We began with some activities at the various schools today, and will continue on throughout the week. And thank you, this doesn't, it's like the comparison to what we know you need and deserve, and we want to make sure we recognize you on a daily basis for your work. So, with that, I will close student and staff recognitions and turn it over to Board of Education or position.
Okay. So, yes, reorganization are just reminders of organizations. So, this time of year shortly after, within the timeframe of after the election, we take the time to just ensure that our following year, we have roles and responsibilities designated to board members for the different facets of our work. So, we'll start with election of officers. We'll move through from president through deputy clerk, and I would just accept nominations as we go. I may elevate and nominate myself as we move through. So, I would accept a nomination for role of president.
I'd like to nominate Jen Murphy.
Thanks. Are there any other nominations for the role of president for this next year? I will accept the nomination, and then we'll go ahead and take an official vote, I suppose. So, all those in favor of Jen Murphy, AKA me, serving as president for this next year, signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, moving on to vice president. Yeah, landslide with our four above five. I nominate John to continue on as vice president, if you may be willing to do so. Any other nominations? Do we need a motion in second, Nate? For election officers, do we need a motion in second? Can we nominate and vote?
Yes, you can nominate.
Thank you. All right. So, we just, thank you for clarifying. All right, if there's no other nominations, except, we'll take a vote on John serving as vice president for next year. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, treasurer. All right, treasurer.
I'm gonna need Joe to stay on.
Assuming the thumbs up means you are a willing, agreeable.
Yep.
Participant for that role. Any other nominations for treasurer? Hearing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving Joe to serve as treasurer for this next year signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then moving on to clerk. I would like to nominate Corby to continue. I feel as though you've done an amazing job with the clerkship. Thank you again for the election time. I know it's a busy time for you, if you are willing to accept such nomination.
I accept the nomination.
Any other nominations for clerk? Hearing none, all those in favor of Corby serving the role of clerk for this next year signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, this will be the fun one. I will confess, I did have a conversation. We do have a missing member that I'd like to nominate for deputy clerk, and that would be a continuation of Juan Carlos, who has served in the role this past year. Any other nominations? All right, well, this group of five will take a vote. All those in favor of Juan Carlos serving as deputy clerk signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have our officers designated for this next year, not calendar year, not academic year, election year, however you want to frame it. So, moving on to WASB, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards delegate. Corby, it's my understanding that you are willing to continue to serve as our delegate to the WASB Convention?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. And I believe alternate, again, I had a conversation, I believe Juan Carlos is willing to serve in that role. Nate, do these need formal votes in terms of these officers or the WASB delegate, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take those separately. All those in, any other nominations for either of those roles, delegate or alternate to the WASB Convention? All those in favor of approving Corby to serve as our WASB delegate signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And all those in favor of Juan Carlos serving as our alternate to the WASB Convention signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to CISA Two, our Cooperative Education Service Agency Representative. John, you've been in that role. We greatly appreciated your service. Are you be willing to continue?
Sure.
Any other nominations for CISA Two? Okay, all those in favor of approving John to serve as our CISA Two representative signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then IDAC representatives. Chad, I ask you this every time. Do you remember the acronym for IDAC?
I was just trying to.
Right? We do this every time, I know.
Governmental, Donut, the Agency Committee.
Yeah, we review this just for the, yeah, for the sake of.
Development.
Yeah.
The community. It's, it's four times a year meetings that are leadership of the district, leadership of all the municipalities that the district serves, just to come together and share updates about construction. Grove.
Chamber.
Chamber, thank you. The mayor's, so, yeah. Great touch point for just that collaboration with municipalities and the district. And I would like to nominate John to serve as a board representative, which you've done before. And then I'd also like to nominate Christopher, so we'd have kind of representation board-wise from the Verona side of things and the Pittsburgh side of things, if you two are willing to participate in those meetings.
Yes.
Anyone else to nominate or interested, so don't miss anyone. All those in favor of approving John and Christopher to serve as our IDAC representatives for the board signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to approval of the 25-26 Board Calendar. So, this is linked in Board Docs, if you have not looked at this yet. This is basically approving our board meetings for the 2025-26 school year. I think the only thing to, oh, you do have one printed for us too. Yes, thank you. As I look up for my screen to see Lori waving in the background. I think the only thing to note, just in conversation that Lori and I had in looking at calendar, where we might have staff days where there's no school on a Monday or holidays. We're gonna extend a bit of a longer break between the last meeting of December and the first meeting in January, just to honor the winter break and to give leadership staff a week to come back to school before we have that first meeting. And that means as we follow the cadence, we will have a back-to-back set of Mondays, February into March. That was gonna be necessary no matter what, and we decided to kind of offlay the longer winter break with that back-to-back than the February to March, knowing that we'll have spring break coming as well.
Can we just do, I think, I'm 99% sure this is correct, but I just want to make sure. Can we check the date for Dr. Margaret DeKane holiday?
Yes, I think we did do that. It is the 19th. Yeah, January 19th.
19th, okay.
Yeah, so we'll do second and fourth that month.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, I think we've cross-checked enough, hopefully that all of the dates. So, just to surface that part of the discussion, by the way, I don't think there's anything particularly controversial about the calendar, but certainly if anyone did look closely and has any questions or things to elevate, please feel free to do so. Okay. If not, I would take a motion to approve the calendar then, as presented for 25-26.
So.
Thank you, Corby, second.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor of approving the 25-26 Board Meeting Calendar signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Vote to designate the Verona Press as our official district newspaper. Any other suggestions or conversation about that vote? All right, all those in favor of approving Verona Press as our official district newspaper signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, similar setup for retaining Lake Ridge Bank as our fiscal depository for the general fund payroll accounts and debt service fund. So, that's keyword retain, continuing with Lake Ridge Bank. Any conversation or questions about that? All those in favor of approving to retain Lake Ridge Bank as our fiscal depository for the district signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then finally, our vote to retain legal counsel. And we do have a number of firms that are listed here that are used for various reasons that we may have to use legal counsel as a district. They're in the agenda, I'm not gonna read the full list here. I think I'll save the time and energy and the voice for that. But if there are any questions, again, that board members have, please feel free to circle those now.
Can I just make a clarification for?
Yes, yeah.
Nate, that we're still serving as our in-house counsel. These are outside partnerships in the community, is some additional support to the legal world.
Thank you.
Clarify Nate.
Yes. And we appreciate, as you even saw in this board meeting moments ago, we appreciate having in-district counsel for those moments that don't require the external use of another firm. All those in favor of retaining the legal counsel for the district as listed in the agenda signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, if anyone feels like we don't take enough board action in a meeting, there we go. So, we will now turn things over back to Dr. Clarity with the superintendent's report. And we have some esteemed colleagues here as well to share some updates.
Thank you. I will quickly turn it over to Chad Wiese and John Bremer. As we, actually, both will be directly involved in two, particularly, both of these, but while they are superintendent's report, they do have a lot of logistics in terms of, one, being our partnerships with the, with the city, and what we see as a very, very possible solution for serving all of the students in our city. And a second, in terms of a healthcare clinic and the construction proposals, and knowing what that may be for the staff and families of the Verona School District. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wiese to get us going.
Thanks, Dr. Clarity. This may be one of my favorite agendas of the year, or at least my corner of the world. It's a little grab bag of all things operations this night. We will try to merge together and make sense of, like, in some regards, kind of some random topics, but also work related to maintaining our facilities in OE 12. So, we've got the superintendent's report portion of the agenda, a, an initial look at a potential land sale, along with a proposal for how we'd like to go ahead with the construction of an onsite clinic, which we discussed at the last board meeting. And then in the board action portion, we have OE 12. We made the decision to include in OE 12, because it is part of that work, both a, a summary of compliance related to that board policy, and then also a re-up capacity study review that did have some changes from the last time we presented to the board in 2022, and updated enrollment projection, which should be of interest to all of us and connects right back to IDAC that the board just took table on previously. And that certainly stopped me a long way if folks have questions, because again, we've got kind of a varied agenda related to the world of operations. So, the first we wanted to go through tonight is a proposal and really an update on some conversations I've been having with the city of Verona for about the last six months regarding the possibility of selling our softball fields that are in the north of Country View Elementary. We've got a map to kind of orient the board in terms of what that looks like, really for a variety of reasons. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up by saying, I was actually the one that approached the city. And part of that was John, with a little bit of John Bremer's urging, that we had, basically softball fields that we were not using for district purposes, potentially a little bit during the day at Country View, but nothing to support our varsity athletics, because we built a middle high school that has a couple of amazing softball fields that are good to use for that purpose. And there have been some developments with that, that conversation that did start about half a year ago that we're obviously quite excited about. And we want to share to the board what we think is possible in terms of a true partnership with the city to not only preserve that space, but make it better into the future. So, a little bit of background, we've got two existing softball fields, a parking lot and some green space north of Country View Elementary School. We have tonight, an initial conversation we're interested in more feedback on, potentially selling those softball fields to the city of Verona. It should be said, from the get-go, with these conversations with the city, it was important to us that we figured out a way to essentially lock in that we didn't want to, we didn't want to have the city or our district lose access to those softball fields in the future. So, we did not approach anyone else about the possible sale of those two softball fields. And if anything, we believe if this comes together, those will be ball diamonds in perpetuity with some of the pieces that we're putting into place with the city. And quite honestly, I think get better attention in terms of maintenance than they currently are. John has essentially the same grounds crew he had pre-refund them for this building, and they're stretched thin to maintain all of the acreage we've got in the district. So, our initial conversations had talked about a price that could still be negotiated of about $250,000. The city's, and we want to get into this a little bit tonight. This just developed over the last month and a half, two months. The city, without us knowing we were having these conversations, has been approached by the Miracle League of Dane County about the possibility of having a presence here in the city of Verona. We've got a short video to show the board shortly on what that might look like. So, as Jamie and I, kind of my counterpart with the city, have been having these conversations, this just kind of got dropped in his lap about a month or six weeks ago. But this group is very serious about this possibility, and we're excited about what it could mean to Country View Elementary. If the Miracle League of Dane County raised money, I think it's in partnership with the Rotary Club of Dane County, what would happen? Jamie's thinking possibly by the time we hit summer of 2027. If all of this comes together, the district's comfortable with the sale of the property, the city and their city council is comfortable with it as well, and they ink a deal with Miracle League, which seems like it's inevitable if this came together on our part, in terms of us selling the land. With that, just north of Country View, they would have a brand-new hord rubber field that is fully accessible. We've got a video to kind of show you what that looks like, and would have a brand-new, fully accessible playground. So, we are talking a couple million dollars of upgrades to the facilities north of Country View if this all came together. A piece that I've been working on with Jamie, that we would likely include as a checkbox in this deal, would also be the fact that the city would designate this as a parkland when they took it on, meaning that is it, that's what that place can be in perpetuity. They would not have the ability to sell that ever, or redevelopment or anything else. So, I know, we've certainly heard from some of our folks who are involved in Veronee softball, wanting to make sure that that would take place. And we believe that there's a win-win to be had here, better maintained diamonds, more access to little ones, getting access to summer programming related to softball, and a really nice new playground for Country View and the community after school hours. So, it's, it's exciting if this all came together. Continued, we've had, again, months of ongoing discussions with the city of Verona. I met Steiner, met with our head softball coach. He's in favor of this. Our girls' softball numbers are down a little bit. And there's a variety of reasons for that, but one of the, our softball was that one of them is just access in terms of young girls playing softball at an early age. The city would be committed to more accessible, cost-effective programming during the summer if they had the facilities to do it. Again, our grounds crew is stretched. We've had a favorable meeting with the club softball president, and also have a president and director who's super excited about this possibility. So, to lay this out a little bit, I did the best I could to draw some general lines in terms of what this might look like. So, the yellow lines on this diagram that the board can see would be the outline of our existing property at Country View. And the orange line would be our new property line at Country View in the event that the sale went through. In a general area, you can see this city-owned property that's to the northwest of Country View there would likely be the new Miracle League field. And then we just sketched in a spot that we would guess, a brand-new, fully accessible hord rubber playground would go, go in as well, related to the Miracle League of Dane County. The city's also interested in taking on that stormwater pond that will help them in terms of any of the new hard surfaces that would go in at that site. They have control over that, just to make sure that stormwater would be handled appropriately in the event that all these upgrades go. Again, stop me if you've got questions, but I think Lori's gonna help me with the video here shortly. Or Lori, oh.
Back to work and the magic.
All right, here we go. Miracle League of Dane County.
I'm in love with the game of baseball. The only thing in the world I wanted was to make it on a little league team. I went through all the tryouts, hitting, fielding, throwing, and my friends told me I did a great job. Commissioner Leal walked up to me and my parents. Even though I could play well, he told me I could not be on the team because of my artificial leg. I could get hurt or hurt another player. I was devastated. It hurt like nothing before. One day I was on the field, and the next day I could only watch the game I loved through a chain-linked fence. 66 years later, it's time for a new field. It's time to let everyone play. It's time for the Miracle League.
The Miracle League of Dane County provides children with cognitive and physical disabilities the opportunity to play America's favorite pastime, baseball. But it's not only about baseball. In addition to hitting the ball, making their way around the bases, and crossing home plate, these children get to experience life-changing moments that will forever impact them and their families, volunteers, coaches, fans, and the community at large. The diamond at Baken Park in Cottage Grove has a flat rubberized synthetic field that enables children with wheelchairs, walkers, or poor mobility to play baseball. Each child has a buddy who is by their side as they play the game and to help them as needed. But it takes more than the love of the game to run the Miracle League. To operate the league each season, to support kids and families, and to provide even more incredible services, we need help. This opportunity becomes a reality for so many kids in our community, thanks to volunteers, sponsors, and you. To learn more and donate. To learn more and donate, please visit danecountymiracleleague.org.
Thanks Lori.
Billy Barrow once said, "Love is remote."
All right, if that doesn't bring a little tear, you're going to check yourself for a pulse.
Yeah.
So yeah, we're excited about that possibility. And I think it, again, is a win-win for the city and for the school district if this all came together. But we're also very interested in board feedback. So next stops for me, board feedback tonight. Continued discussions with the city. Eventually, we would have to review and have voted on by the school board. If I get positive feedback tonight, I'll continue to work with Jamie. There was like the F T B survey work done. We would work on a shared use agreement. Meaning that during the school hour, similar what we had set up at Glacier, that we'd have access to the facilities north of Country View. And we would, we would eventually get to it and offer to purchase from the city of Verona that they would present to us. It should also include parkland dedication. And in the end, all of you approve it. So questions or feedback on this topic for this evening?
Yes.
I mean, to your point, it really feels like a win-win. Partially the win for us to not have this land. I mean, right? I'm really hearing you say that there's just a lot of maintenance and things perhaps that we just don't need the access to these fields from a district perspective. So being able to give this back to the city and have these as the plans. And just to clarify, obviously, once we sell the land, you know, all of these things that you've highlighted, it's not anything we are doing as a district. But it's ideally the aspirations of what the city plans to do moving forward. And maybe there's this piece within a contract that would say keeping that dedicated parkland piece. Just so there is kind of that promissory note, I guess, so to speak, that some of that comes to fruition.
Correct.
I guess, I don't know if I had a question in there?
Yeah.
Or by summarizing?
Even related to OE twelve. So we have a yellow check tonight. The yellow check came from, and we'll get to this, came from the fact that last year in July, John's budget was slightly overspent by the time we got to the end of June. Primary reason was some bills came due on a big roofing project we had due. John already knew he had the money in front forty-one to cover it the next year. But I do think it is, that's kind of a signal. Mr. Brummer could go through twice his budget every year handily. We do a good job, not great, but a good job in this district, giving John enough money to maintain the sites and the facilities that we have. But really, I think we get feedback on occasion regarding the maintenance of those softball fields. And it's up to John to try to do the balancing act of where we're putting resources that we need to use to maintain our own sites for a field that's relatively, if not very low usage, for our own students during the school day. And that's kind of where we're at.
And am I remembering somewhere in the conversation that there still would be access though for Country View students to these spots? So even though they become city-owned, we still have the ability to utilize as may be desired during the school day with students?
Playground is non-negotiable, that's going to happen. I think it would have a fence. It looks like there'll be a fence for that, the hore rubber field.
Yeah.
Jamie already reached out to Miracle League and it sounds like that would be open to Country View as well during the day, which would be an amazing asset to the elementary school. So a brand-new upgraded playground and then softball fields are still there. We'd have access to those during the day as well. So again, I do believe it's a true win-win for all involved that this did come together. Any other question or feedback? I'm seeing lots of nods that we should continue these conversations with the city. I certainly would expect the board to ask questions around the shared use agreement and the parkland dedication next time we come back to you. And then we'll have more information when we've got an official survey put together in terms of acreage and so forth. And we're hoping, who knows, even in the next couple of months, this all comes together and we can bring it back to you for a board vote.
So yeah, I think in that interim, if there's anything that we are missing or board members now that will be kind of out and about too with this information to just, if there's anything obvious that I feel like, right, the win-win feels so clear. So just ensuring that there isn't obvious tidbits that maybe as board members we ought to know to be concerned about. It doesn't seem like there's anything now.
We would certainly surface that for you if anything goes.
All right, and vote to come, but carry on, I guess is what our nods are saying?
Yes. Perfect.
Okay. Great.
All right, next, a slight left turn here, but still related to the world of our grounds and facilities. We'd like to bring a proposal to the board tonight. President Murphy already pulled this onto the board agenda for a vote this evening so it didn't have to be pulled out of consent. We did type up, John and I picked up a consent memo that stayed true to the process related to OE six in terms of board approval. But we do have a proposal for you tonight to build an onsite clinic for our staff, which we're super excited about. So we presented this at the last board meeting. There was some questions around where can we go? We asked the board to be patient so we can run a little bit of interference behind the scenes because some of us are going to have to move where we work for the onsite clinic. You're looking at one of those people along with our superintendent that will actually end up moving related to this work. So we ended up, after some exploratory work in terms of the square footage we have around the district, landing on a proposal to have the round floor, affectionately known as the garden level, at central office, become our onsite clinic. It's fully accessible, has plenty of parking. And we felt kind of the hub of the original Verona area school district campus. So we've got a, I think, over half of our school district in terms of adults would be within walking distance of the onsite clinic if we get board approval tonight to move forward with this. So this is an initial first sketch that we did share with some contractors in terms of some of the modifications that would have to take place. What we're proposing to you this evening is a little different than, say, when John and I brought a hard bid package to the board to do the welcome center at Savannah. This is a little different method in terms of building. It's actually the way we built the high school. Where the school board, along with previous district administration, came up with a budget in terms of square footage cost to build the high school. And then did what they call a design build, where they got input from both the builder and the designer from the get-go to build an efficient on-budget project. And this is actually more advantageous for us here because we've got a tight timeline. And we believe that there will be some efficiencies in terms of bringing this in well below the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar maximum price. Because John will be at the table. Findorf, if you approve it, will be at the table. And the designer will be at the table from the get-go. This initial design, after we first took a picket with Findorf, they're like, why don't you put the sink back to back on the east side of that building so we can save on plumbing costs? So you can see in the exam room, kind of on the north picture side of that, there's a sink there. There's the possibility of swapping an exam room for a behavior hall room and automatically finding efficiencies related to heating and cooling and plumbing and everything else. So that's the proposal we wrote the consent memo around this evening. This is the, essentially, the features that will exist in the program related to the onsite clinic when it is built. We did receive three quotes and those are embedded in the consent memo this evening. We will, we've reached consensus on a guaranteed max price. John, I certainly commend for him making a dollar stretch in the Verona area school district. Sometimes we'll fall back to push him to spend money on some things. We'll certainly be at the table to make sure we get value for these projects. So if you approve it tonight, then we get together with Findorf to get contracts signed to build this. And then actually coordinate final design and drawings. And tonight, we can't move forward with it without the board approving that guaranteed max price and Findorf building it. Questions on that? Anything goes? And I'm glad Mr. Brummer's at the board table with me if you guys have specifics.
Yeah, please. Can you talk a little bit about, so you're being relocated to where?
Yeah, good question. So we currently have a one-month renter in the form of the Painters Union of Dane County at the facility we bought. They will be out at the end of May. They've got five small offices and a couple of larger, kind of classroom-sized meeting areas and a conference room at their existing building. And again, this is, this all does come together in some type of amazing way tonight related to our long-range facilities plan, our capacity study, and our enrollment study. We actually don't think we will be needing to utilize the land we purchased probably until like the mid-two thousand and thirties because of some of the things I'm going to share with you this evening. So we have a perfectly usable building in Pittsburgh. I actually think it will be a good thing for us to have more of a central office presence in Pittsburgh. So I would be there with the whole finance team. We'd also have a satellite office for Dr. C. And I think there's the possibility down the road of even having HR and payroll move out there for a little bit of time. That could be down the road. Rochelle's already started to kind of talk to her team about that. That would not happen immediately. So in the short term, it would be about six people would slide out of the basement of central office. We will move Dr. C. and Lori upstairs for his main office. And then Dr. C. would also have a presence out in Pittsburgh. Good question, Joe.
I just, I think that's so important and such a great thing because if we hadn't been doing that kind of future planning with this land acquisition that we knew had a building on it, that we knew had the possibility we could use it, we might not be able to do an onsite clinic if we didn't have the space to put our staff. So I think that's a key part of this.
One hundred percent. Yeah, I mean, and we definitely took, John and Rochelle and I led this project two months ago. We took a hard look at our entire school district. And there are some, you know, there's empty classrooms at Country View that you're going to find out are going to fill up in the very near future. We took a look at some spaces at the high school and would have had to move some existing programming that's doing quite well here. And really made what we thought was a student-centered, student-first decision to move the adults around. And we feel, really came up with a good solution. Dean SSM Health, they're super excited about where they're going to end up. They've got other comparisons with other Dane County school districts and they really think this is a good fit. So yeah, we're excited for it.
And this, I know some of the questions last time, I don't want to speak for Meredith in her absence, but some of the questions that I recall her having about security, safety, not sort of interweaving a clinic in a school site and having just this cross kind of traffic that this is then purely isolated traffic within the sake of the clinic that we haven't kind of blended those spaces in a way that I could see, right? Being an actual layer of security concern.
True. And we've already begun with the design team. This will, this will be its own little bubble at central office as well in terms of how we do e-res and access control. So there will likely be, if you're familiar with central office, there will likely be a door on the east side of the building, kind of towards Main Street, where we'll bring people into central office, kind of on that stairwell.
On the stairwell, yeah.
So we're already working on access control as well. That will be important to us to make sure that that's the case with the remaining folks at central office. But certainly would have been all the more important if we would have been bringing in unfamiliar staff and families into a school. And now we don't have to go through that.
And I'm sure this is maybe an obvious question, but just given the size of our district, the size of the staff we'd be servicing, this size clinic is reasonable for all of that.
Yeah, Dean is super excited about it. Yeah, they feel very good about the space. They probably could have squeezed them another three or four hundred square feet smaller, but didn't have to do that because of where we landed with the central office space. So there'll be more than enough to adequately serve our students there.
Awesome.
Isn't directly relevant, but I'm looking at this diagram and it shows unfinished space. Is that finishable space or is that just utilities?
They label it unfinished space because they're not finished.
Oh, okay.
So if we end, if we end up with a little scope creep there, I think most of it would happen in the unfinished space John's crew would like to pick up. It could mean a couple of wall moves. But our tech team and the brains of the existing IT room, we won't go anywhere. So the central server for the Payer District is in that existing IT room. And then we've got three or four members from our tech team that will remain in the garden level of central office, at least per the plan in the short term. So there could be some modest modifications back there. You can see the door there, this would be on the west side of this drawing on the exterior of the building. And actually, the purpose of that door would be to bring district staff and allow them to go downstairs and get into that, kind of the tech area of the basement of central office. Good question.
So the main entrance, sorry, would be on the upper part of the drawing here. The vest field, that's the main.
So that will be the same door you walk in to come see Dr. C. That door won't move. The vest reveal might expand a little bit. Once you have this level of renovation, ADA considerations come into play. So a couple of those toilets actually have to turn to make sure we've got the appropriate radius for a wheelchair. The corridor next to the toilet rooms may have to be expanded slightly. So there'll be a few ADA things that will work their way into the renovation as well. Great.
And we, I know it was only the last meeting, but this is already covered by the budget amendment we approved last meeting?
This is, this is the budget that's what you approved, you approved at the last meeting. The next portion of this will be the staffing related to, because we essentially pay for the staff. We paid Dean SSM Health, paid those folks. That will be built into the preliminary twenty-five, twenty-six budget that you will also approve. So there'll be a series of approvals. Once we have the space approved, Rochelle and Nate can finally get to the finalization of the contract related to the four people that will work here and the services that will be provided. So lucky you, there's a decent chance the very next board meeting will ask you to approve the contract for Dean SSM Health. And that will essentially be pre-approval for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget because we will put the cost of the staffing into the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah.
And then you won't hear from us for the end of the year while on this.
So the budget amendment last meeting was to free up the money for this, but today we have to vote on it actually?
The site.
Where it goes and how it goes.
Which is a great reminder just for the community too of the meeting that we had last time in terms of just the conversation about justifying this as a thing, right? We've been that, down that road, had that conversation as to why this is beneficial for the district and approving the funds to make this happen. We were without exact details and site and bids. And so here we are, as you can see in the consent memo, which is listed that we'll now take a vote on. Just the recommendation that now the renovation happens at the garden level of central office.
Yes. First thing, vote it.
Any other questions, comments, or?
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
I was listening to you talk about unfinished space. I'm curious, this is mostly accurate. But in listening to you talk, it sounded like one of the things that might change is that the access to the existing IT room might be through that unfinished space instead of through the clinic.
It undoubtedly will be. So there's currently a temporary glass wall with a makeshift meeting area labeled unfinished space. And that will have to be moved. So John is already starting to figure out, is there a spot potentially at the Painters Union building, now our building, that we potentially could utilize some of the hardware in the unfinished space? But John would likely have to build a corridor that actually used to exist ten years ago in the unfinished space to allow for essentially our tech team to get back to the area that they currently work in. But again, that likely won't be related to the scope of this project.
Sure.
Good question. Any others? John, I thought you were going to give me more, like you're always renovating your house. So I thought you were going to give us design. So if the light bulb goes on, we're certainly interested in hearing.
Where's the solarium?
No solarium in this project. All right.
All right, well, I'll have you linger, team, because I think we still, but I, we will follow the agenda and just step into public comment next in case there may be anything, Lori, that I'm unaware of that relates to some of the topics that we've talked about tonight. Okay. Okay. So if not, then we will shift then officially into board action. So we did then bump from consent this memo in particular. So we'll go ahead and take an official vote then to approve what has been presented about the onsite clinic. So if you haven't looked at the consent agenda memo, please pull that up. And now's the time for any further questions. Otherwise, I would accept a motion to approve the proposed renovation work for the SSM Health Onsite Clinic.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Second, Corby, without even having to be prompted. All those in favor of approving the proposal for the renovation work? All those in favor of approving the proposal for the renovation work for the onsite clinic for VASD signify with I. I. Any opposed? All right. And then moving to OE 12. So we are just getting the whole gamut this evening, so let's talk.
It is a one-stop shop.
Right? Let's talk facilities.
Perfect. All right. So in, in the board portion of tonight's agenda, we have OE 12. We elected to include a refresh capacity study and enrollment study.
Amazing information.
So we're going to do, we're going to do all three in the, I encourage both the board, there's a 90-page, very well-done enrollment study from MDR that gives you a very good idea of what's happening in our school district over the next 10 or 15 years of development and increased enrollment. But we're going to start tonight with OE 12. So a reminder to the board, in a nutshell, OE 12 is making sure that the superintendent is plantful and responsible related to maintaining our, our, our buildings and grounds. And we have a, a, a full monitoring report that is attached to everything this evening. We are not going to go slide by slide on every indicator. And we do have a little bit of a year in review slide that I'm going to turn over to John here shortly. And then we do have one moderate exception related to compliance that we're going to get into a little bit more detail. And then we are very interested in answering any questions if you have others related to board compliance related to that monitoring report. So we did, we do believe we're handing over a report that does provide the evidence related to 16 of 17 indicators being compliant. All the evidence is linked with Board Doc links for the board related to that monitoring report. And as I said, we have one indicator that we believe was compliant with exceptions. We'll get into details on that shortly. I did want to turn it over to John for just a little bit of a year in review in terms of maintaining our amazing facilities. One bullet that did not make the slide was John Remmer's crew and John Remmer's work made the highest score on our, our, our annual survey in terms of community members and how they feel, I think with 83%, gave us a gold star for how we maintain our facilities. The group that runs that survey said they never see that, that lots of times it's the opposite, that our community's feeling bad about how we maintain facilities. And that's not the case in the Marone area school district. John and his team, huge piece of that. John, I'll turn it over to you for a year in review in terms of what you've got going on.
So three bullet points there. Our first projects included New Century and BIAS. It would have been the, wasn't all of it. We still have a steel portion of the roof, over part of it that has served us super well, but the other portion had served us really well for a really, really long time. So to get the insulation updated on that roof, we get to realize some more efficiency that way and then also just setting a roof that will serve us for quite a while. We also did a section of Badger Ridge that needed some help. We continue to that work this summer as well. Window project at Sugar Creek turned out fantastic. If you drive by, you'll see the clear anodized aluminum windows that will serve for the rest of our lifetimes. And again, we, I think we had 30, 40 years out of some residential windows that were installed in that building.
And nothing but amazing feedback from staff. Todd can say that. Yeah. Difference maker.
And I was a part of like upcoming project, made a great experience with the contractor. We don't need to say that again as well. HKAC project that's now started, it continues this summer. It is basically putting new equipment, heating and cooling equipment in nearly every space in that entire building, updating it. Also new controls and then probably our crew's favorite part of it, we're going to be putting in an energy wheel similar to what we have installed in this building to capture heat rather than not capture it. We'll end up getting a rebate for that. It's, it's small compared to the overall cost of it, but it's something that everything helps and then the efficiency is, you know, the real payback over 20 years, 25 years.
And every one of these projects had definitely energy efficiency aspects to them.
Yeah.
John, do you want to just talk through a little bit in terms of the improvement work you're doing to monitor open ticket time for work orders and reviewing, I think more than anything, student staff feedback relative to our climate survey?
Yeah, so the survey results are, well, I'll talk about open ticket time. So when I started looking back historically, ticket time response is an average 13 days. In the past, I guess we go back two years ago, it was 10. In the fall, we had an opportunity to establish some goals for that, made that known to our staff, specifically our head custodians, as they do many of the tickets throughout, throughout all our buildings. And then it steadily creeped and continues to creep down to the point where I pulled our last year's worth of tickets and I think we're averaging four days now. So the improvement is great. At some point, we're going to reach a point where it's going to be hard to kind of squeeze more water out of the cheese. And like, and I'm, like, I want to keep it to this low key, like Ken and my staff. I do not want them stressed out over doing a great job. But the improvement we've seen is, I think is remarkable because we weren't getting, not getting negative feedback about our response time. As a matter of fact, it's usually very complimentary. But I think just an awareness of it gets in the back of our minds and they're acting upon it. So kudos to them. I mean, they do a fantastic job.
Could you give just a few examples of what some tickets might look like? Like typical things that might get submitted? I'm just curious what, you know, like broken chair.
I'm in the high school, so furniture repair.
Okay.
That little charging stand there is a high maintenance thing. Outlets get used and used and used and have to get switched out. Tables, these chairs have been pretty good. So that's typical.
Okay.
Could be a banged up wall that needs to get painted. Could be a new dry erase board that needs to be reconnected. General things that's allowed to be ready to fix it or?
A hundred percent.
Okay.
Last week it was dryers and aquatics that got the fix for the board. Just because they're used and used.
Sure.
So it, it really varies. I mean, it's as simple as A and B to key card for Saturday for so-and-so to get access for a basketball tournament to. This wasn't a ticket. I mean, there's, like, we're trying to capture everything that our folks do, which we can just try to improve that. I don't think we'll ever capture it all. It could have, totally could have been a ticket. It's not, but we have a tally, changing out components in our lunch tables to make it so that the assist system for Jason actually works. So it's just all the board that they do every day.
Yeah. Which is a way to elevate and share gratitude for all the things that are being done every day. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John. And then I have in bold, our capacity study and enrollment projections, which we're going to get into a little bit more detail tonight. Interested if folks have feedback when we get there. So I did want to spend just a little bit of time on our one yellow checkmark. So again, the, there's almost counterintuitive OE 12 policies related to evidence. One says, make sure you spend all your maintenance money. The other one says, don't over.
Don't overspend.
So, which is, which is hard and it's hard for anyone to do that. It's in particular a very difficult mark for John Remmer to hit where 70% of his project money is spent in two months during the summer. And he just mentioned, we were on two different roofs a, a year ago, and we ended up having pay requests come in early in the month of June because they got out of the gates on time and John paid the bill and we told him to pay the bill. Audit requirements say if the work is done in June and you get billed in June, you pay it out of that fiscal year, and we did so. John knew all along Fund 41 has carryover possibilities and always does for the following year. So he essentially started July 1st, $200,000 in the hole. But that was fine because it was an expenditure John built into his budget when the budget turned over. So we did want to be completely transparent with the school board, but the budget finished $200,000 in the hole. But that was essentially a planned budget deficit because Fund 41 carries over on an annual basis and we had to pay the bill when it came due. I think we're hopeful that the board is agreeing with this. What I would not want to have happen is John keeping five or $600,000 rolling over in Fund 41 every year. That is money our taxpayers are paying for us to maintain our schools. And it should be the expectation of the board and our taxpayers that we're spending it on an annual basis on things like roofs and new windows, which we, we have done. But in line with this, we wanted to be transparent that we wrapped up that fiscal year with a little bit of a deficit. Questions at all on that?
If, if the overrun we're talking about was because of a planned expense that we knew was coming, but maybe just came a little bit sooner than we were expecting or in a different fiscal year.
That is exactly what happened.
Should we expect that then this year's budget will come in slightly younger?
Not necessarily. This is John trying to thread the needle every year. He, he already mentioned, we've got a big roofing project that will likely end up on board approval here in the coming board meetings at Badger. And the same thing will be true. John is doing an amazing job of spending his budget on an annual basis and his big summer project work. We could also add things like a $200,000 parking lot that Paine Dooley calls him up and says, we can get going a week early. And John is doing that delicate balance between two fiscal years. And he'll say go, but it also does mean there's a chance there's a yellow checkmark in this year.
Okay. The flexibility has to be there for that to happen.
Right, that summer leans over.
Yeah, even though that New Century, that summer was done and we end up with a rainy August, all of a sudden, we're putting the finishing touches on that roof a couple of days before students are returning. So timelines are tight and John will have, do whatever he can to have contractors going the second summer starts.
I almost forgot that, Jim.
Yeah, that got a little stressful at the end. Any other questions on that? So what, what would happen unless we're tempted to have a rainy June, we're out of the, we're, we're out of the gates slowly at Badger and John has $300,000 left in Fund 41 because we didn't have any pay requests? That $300,000 rolls over to the next fiscal year. Unlike Fund 10, Fund 41 rolls over on an annual basis and then John would just spend it down. So it's actually one of the main advantages of Fund 41. Okay. Other questions on OE 12? I think we'll have a board vote later. So if you guys have other questions related to the 17 standards embedded in that monitoring report, we can certainly answer them now or when, I think Jen opens it up to the board. Perfect. All right, we're going to keep going. All right, now we have two final pieces, all closely tied together. Capacity study, reminder to the board and the community, a capacity study is a study of how many, how many students an individual site can comfortably hold in terms of programming. And we took a slightly different approach this year. This work is never perfectly done and never will be. So for to, to walk through a school, let's take Sugar Creek, spend two hours with Todd, analyze how he's currently using the building, have in-depth discussions with him that, Todd, you've got to set aside right now as a community space. In the event that Sugar Creek picked up another 25 students, could this turn into a classroom? Yes or no? Yep, it could. We kind of take all that data down, we back in our class size recommendations and the programming that's taking place at each school and do the best we can with a third party, an architect, to gauge what the capacity of a school is. And it's not a perfect science. We believe it's more perfect than the last time we presented it to the board because we did just that. John, myself, Michael Account, and Architect, the head principal, and the head custodian spent half a day at every one of these sites to put the capacity study in front of the school board, and we believe it's as good as, as it's been. We found that we picked up some elementary school sites and we kind of thought we would. John and I were having kind of behind the scenes talks, like, we feel like there's a couple of spots at some of these schools that if we asked principals, could this turn into a classroom? They would say yes. So our method was this. We had discussions with principals on spots that were currently not being used as classrooms and broke them into three categories. Principal Bruner, could this space be used as a classroom? He graded it a one, two, or a three. One, absolutely. That was a classroom two years ago, could be a classroom again next year. Tier two, yes, we could, but we'd have to move a few people around and things could get a little tighter. And tier three, absolutely not. It would drastically impact the way we program in the school, and here's why. We embedded tier one and tier two into the capacity study we're presenting to the board tonight, and we did not touch tier three. Tier three is getting close to like mobile classrooms where you're, you're, you're putting classrooms in trailer form in parking lots. And we did not want to get there. We did, really had a COVID-induced born capacity study for 2022, and we feel like this is the best the district has seen and we're proud of the work. So this was a snapshot. I'm not going to read it to you, but did want you to know that we, we ended up in what we call recommended functional classroom sizes informed by our handbook in terms of where we end up with a number of students per section. And again, you'll never, in a, even in an ideal world, get to a spot that every single section in a school is bumped up right against the class size limit. It's just not the way master scheduling works or even enrollment works, but that, those are the numbers that were embedded into the capacity study. In the end, the, the, this is a summary spreadsheet in terms of where we ended up with school capacities. We broke this down by relay level band in terms of where we're at at each site. Some of these buildings, John was a great historian, a place like Country View, a place like Glacier, have had this many students in here before, and we were able to talk to staff members that said, yeah. And when Glacier was 598 students, it wasn't perfect, but Teresa Taylor will tell you, they'd made it work until there was more space available in the school district through the referendum. So we, we, we took into some historical perspective as well. In the end, as we netted this whole thing out, we ended up picking up just over 300 students with elementary school capacity. We actually dropped a few students at six through eight. I think that was primarily Badger, where the, the Badger Core building, class sizes came into play and how they were using the spaces came into play. And at the high school, this one is, in my mind, less important at this point, but there were things like art studio spaces that would never have 30 or 32 students in it because there weren't lab stations available for 30 or 32. And we ended up having a few, fewer seats at the high school. But the high school is decades away from being full and there will be five capacity studies between now and the time the high school's feeling full, but wanted to be transparent with the board on where this ended up. And again, there's no perfect way to do this. Class size amendments are in the mix. There are always changes in terms of what's best practice in classrooms. Master scheduling is always in the mix. In particular, Badger Core is one of the more difficult buildings for us to fit into a master schedule because they share teachers across buildings. But in the end, we're proud of the work that happened related to getting more exact numbers for school capacities. We did a little chart for available seats at each school. And you'll see in the future year, we're going to need them at Country View in particular and Badger. And that is it for the capacity portion. The board, we can do a brief pause, see if you have questions on capacity. Otherwise, we're going to roll into enrollment. We can certainly come back to capacity. But they are very interconnected. Capacity tells us how many seats we have. The MDR study tells us how quickly those seats will be full. So this is a good timing, both these reports came this evening.
Yeah, maybe just noting, right, that these reports are available on Board Docs. To your point, the capacity study, 96 pages, full of information, so.
Very informative. Even to someone who does not have a, a child that goes to our school district, I think it's just interesting reading in terms of what's on the way in our school district in terms of development. All right, so with the enrollment projections, we're going to go through and review the completed study at a high level. There are some implications and things we wanted to highlight, a little bit of discussion around the future. A little bit of discussion around the future of the Jenny Farm option. Middle school capacity popped a little bit more than it did three years ago when we did the capacity and enrollment study. And a revised timeline on when we think we may need a new elementary school and anything else the board might have tonight that they may want to discuss. A little bit about Mark Roppers' work at MD Roppers. Again, this was a 90-page study with all kinds of incredible data that feeds into some of the summary stuff we're gonna talk about tonight. They interviewed our team, the city of Verona, the city of Pittsburgh. We went the extra mile on this one. We emailed 250 paper surveys to the 250 newest homeowners in our school district to find out, do you have students? Do you have students on the way? How many do you think you're gonna have on the way? To make this as accurate as possible, we got very good return in terms of that. And Roppers actually contacted developers in terms of what they are planning to put in, in our school district in terms of the building. So very thorough report.
And by new homeowners, you mean a combination of new construction with new homeowners and like sold and bought?
Yes, both.
That's.
Yes, yep. Yep, both. We had, we had one, and I can't remember exactly how it unfolded, but it was either a renovation or a change in address. But they were, they were in the house like 32 years, and they ended up, the way the data got compacted. Yeah, I've been here 32 years, sent four kids through, but I've been with the school district forever. So yeah, but it was, data was live, I think. So big ideas from this report. We continue to be a growing school district. As a reminder, three quarters of the state can't say that. So that's a good thing, especially when we are pushing against revenue limits on a per pupil basis. We are growing slower than expected, and we reported this to the school board in 2022. There are three main factors in my mind for that. Slower housing growth, there's actually people at this table who lived that, that getting contracts and permits and going through the, all the headaches related to a new home or a new apartment building in our school district has been slower than we thought. The economy is a thing in terms of what's getting developed, higher than normal interest rates right now. And the biggest one was that people are just having fewer children. That they found, in the study, it takes 100 veterans in a multi-family setting. Many of the new apartment buildings you are seeing go up to produce three students. So we are seeing an increase in tax base, but you were also seeing either millennials or retirees moving into those apartments that are not bringing students with them. And we also found that new three or four-headed homes that maybe 10 or 15 years ago produced three, three and a half, four kids. Now it's one and a half or two, because people are just having fewer children when they're even buying kind of your classical, single-family home. So the result of that is an extended, we believe in a slightly extended timeline for that new elementary school, which is fine. We would bring it to the taxpayers when we felt it was time. And we think middle school capacity may need a little bit of attention, maybe sooner than that elementary school conversation. Hi, Dr. C.
I'm Frasier here.
Yep.
But you need to be very clear to anyone that is listening to this report at this time. This, this is a third-party partner with us making recommendations of, if I were in your space here, there's some ways I would suggest this. This is not superintendent or any of this team making a recommendation to the board of how to address this issue.
Clarification noted.
Thanks, Dr. C.
And then likewise, this is not the board doing anything yet either. This is certainly informational from our reliable.
Thanks for us to you on.
Great.
Want to say it one more time, so?
And I will reiterate it again, in particular, I think it's on bullet point three, that, that we, there are some things we actually had to look at. But all right, so I'm gonna go through this rather quickly. I'm not gonna read this verbatim to the board. Big idea in terms of a high-level, seven-point summary with that 90-page report. We are continuing to be a growing school district. We have growth largely driven by new housing development. You'll see that on a map down the road. K-12 enrollment, this should be interesting to the board. We are predicting K-5, that there'll be 600 new students to our school district by the time we hit 2040. That is a big, full elementary school. So that is a thing we're gonna have to work through in the coming years. It's just not immediate. Our middle schools will gain 250, 300. Middle and high schools, 250 and 300 each by 2040 as well. And again, middle school will get tight. So a couple of things to consider. Badger and Country View and Stoner will be the sites that will get the tightest, the quickest by kind of early, middle 2030s. So we've got, we've got some years to watch these things come into, come into effect. Savannah, according to the Roppers report, will continue to be under capacity and will grow slower than most schools. That capacity concerns are less urgent than the last time I presented this to the school board because of the factors we talked about before. Both, we increased the capacity of our elementary schools with this thorough study, and we aren't getting as many students as quickly as we thought we would three years ago. So that's two big ideas out of that. Number three, again, an MD Roppers recommendation, certainly potentially worthy of conversation. We may have to rebalance our middle school enrollment into the future. There's a couple of ways to do that. One's a boundary shift, and Mark and his team, he's got a 15-year history with the school district, said, you're gonna get the majority of your growth at the elementary school level north of Country View. And we'll show you that on a map. All of those students end up funneling to Badger, which is our tightest middle school at this point. So there could be something there for us to eventually consider in terms of school boundary issues. But I think once you kind of start to peel that onion, you can take a look at boundary issues district-wide. But school boards and school administration have to be very planful when that work goes on, when people get very tied to their own school, as they should. We want folks to be passionate about their school community. So if we start to surface those discussions, we want to be very planful on how we do that. But if we did, one of the main reasons would be Badger Core is getting moved home. Another way to do that, that wouldn't be a boundary change, but is certainly a possible alternative. Currently, all of the TWE students that go to Glacier funnel to Badger. Their classmates who are not TWE go to Savannah. That's the only place in our school district that you could have your kindergarten to fifth-grade experience and have, you're peeling off into a different elementary school just because you're a TWE student. So a possibility for us to have discussions about would be potentially having a TWE core in Pittsburgh and having both of our middle schools support TWE programming. That would become a lot of planning. John and I would have far less of that super exciting work. And we'd have to reach TWE families, the Savannah community, and make sure that it's something that would be worth us considering. But that was one of the recommendations embedded in this third-party report. Again, elementary school capacity needs. We believe by mid-2030s, this is gonna need some attention. We have two sites that we could expand into. We don't believe it would be a practical move for us to consider because of transportation and how our buildings are currently laid out, to consider major expansion of our elementary schools where we would own two lots that we could break off and start another site. So we think a new, good elementary school will likely be needed by the mid-2030s, which means potentially pre-referendum talks start four or five years from now. But then we could end up building that in the mid-2030s. So that was another one of the big bullets. I'll keep going here. A reminder of the property we own. The Purple site is 18 acres and would be suited for an elementary school down the road. We just bought nine acres on King James Way. We believe suited for an elementary school. And we bought nearly 60 acres at Lacy that we believe would be suited for a future high school or potentially could support two schools down the road with like an elementary or middle school pairing. But we've got lots of flexibility with a site that big. Roppers' recommendation would be retain all three of these sites as we continue to grow. The sixth is the Jenny Farm, a reminder to the school board. We have an option that was signed, I believe, in 2019 on the Jenny Farm, which is a 164-acre parcel that the district pays $25,000 a year to hold purchasing rights to that property. Roppers, for really two reasons, is recommending that we consider abandoning that option. And eventually, sometime this spring, we would require a board vote to make that decision. One, we purchased the Lacy property. Two, where the Jenny property is, is really kind of now the bullseye of Pittsburgh. Development is happening from the outside in towards the Jenny Farm. And Mark, after talking to city planners, believes it could be one of the last places in the city of Pittsburgh proper, that that ends up having urban improvements to actually develop that site. So we're a few 40-acre farm fields away from that unit being a reality. And Mark would have, Mark has concerns that in our growing school district, that if we needed that land, let's say for two or three elementary schools for now, or eventually our third middle school, it might not be ready for us to build on. So the combination of those two things, we own a decent amount of property, we bought a site for a high school, and how it's going to develop, he is recommending we consider abandoning that option. And then kind of keep in our rolodex, number seven. So no make it need for us to buy additional property right now. However, we should keep an eye on the South Stoner Prairie development that is currently going through the city of Pittsburgh approval process. I can point that out to you on the map here shortly, but that is essentially the west, far west side of the Lacy Road. Is gonna be developed in Pittsburgh next. Will eventually produce an elementary school worth of students. But that again is 10, 15, 20 years out. But similar to kind of what we did with the Purple property, the time in the next five years to approach landowners just outside of that development may be appropriate for an elementary school site. And that's what Mark's recommending. But we don't need 164 acres, and we would need something closer to areas that have been improved via the urban development zone. All right, I hope you guys have questions to that and a lot of talking. In closing, and I think we just have a few more slides. Here is a summary of what's going on with housing in our school district. I think it is, it is interesting that in the next 15, 17 years, there will be 1,600 additional units of single-family homes. That there will be 8,000 new housing units in total. Many of those will be multi-family bedrooms, but averaging 500 a year, with faster growth happening in the 2020s than it did in 2030s. And over 50% of the new housing growth is gonna happen in Country View. And we'll show you a map of that shortly. You can see bulldozers there now and some new multi-family homes and single-family homes. So I think this map's interesting. You can see the dark red area north of Country View. That is the main, one of the main areas Mr. Roppers was concentrating on in terms of growth and will eventually, I think eventually cause us to have to build that elementary school. And in the nearer future, likely have us make some decisions around Badger Core. But that is the hottest spot on that map in terms of growth. I think we're getting close to the end. I find this to be a very useful chart. This is projecting a couple of years out, five years out, 10 years out, and 15 years out in terms of what Mark believes at this point will be the enrollment at each of those sites. We had the new capacity study handed over to Roppers, and he was able to take a look in terms of where we'll be at with functional capacity. And you can see there are a few sites that will get, will get pretty tight into the future. He color-coded those, yellow, keep an eye on it, red, you're over functional capacity. So I think that's valuable for us to have an eye on in terms of the sites that will need some attention here in the next 10 or 15 years. And that is it for me in terms of talking on all of these wonderful topics. Here to answer questions or take feedback from the board.
It's so, it's so fascinating, all the information, and super helpful. I mean, just to have this partnership, like you said, at least 15 years with Mark Roppers and his team. I mean, to have access to this, I mean, what a rich way to be as concretely crystal ball readers as possible. This data is just super helpful, a lot to chew on.
Thoughts, questions, or comments?
Just on that last slide, slide 49, is functional building capacity also by definition of school perspective, not just a statistician perspective? I mean, how to have alongside those conversations you had at sites of realistically what is functional mean in terms of the educator's view on functional? Do you get what I'm saying versus just bodies in a building?
100%. So the EUA study carved that up a couple of different ways. They did it based on square footage and even looked at spaces like cafeteria space when things start to get really tight. But the principal involvement was very important in terms of where we're running with class size limits and how we're utilizing each space. So that, that report got detailed enough in terms of how many students we can fit in a science lab and so forth. And I, I think even just that, does this feel right test? I, I think John and I, and I'll tell you right now, Steph and Dr. Love, would tell you Badger Core feels full. It is a busy, full building. And the combination of this capacity study along with where we see enrollment going kind of proves that with some hard data. And there are other sites you walked through. You walked through Country View with Jess, and she had a decent number of classrooms that were empty. But very good laundry planning from the school district seven or eight years ago saw this coming, that there was gonna be a development north of Country View. When they redid boundaries, they left some empty classrooms and pulled a bunch of kids out of Country View with redistricting, and that will fill up in a hurry once all those, once all that housing development takes off. Other questions or comments? Again, I encourage you, it's, it's not super light reading. Read that enrollment stuff because I think there's some pretty fascinating stuff in there.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing third-party recommendations and data that we will chew on and further disseminate over. Right.
At the very least.
Great.
John, I believe we're turning it back over to you for a board vote on OE 12.
Yes, so board members, we have heard all the information reported to us about OE 12. So I'll now accept a motion to approve the report as presented so we can just engage in any further dialogue about compliance. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Or is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Board members, any further questions, comments, thoughts about our vote to approve OE 12 as being in compliance with the one exception that was noted, but the report has been shared to us as being in compliance?
Somebody else gonna say something? No. I find that being in compliance, I think is interesting to listen to the exception because I wonder if there is a more reasonable indicator. Because it seems like it's just gonna consistently, given that our fiscal year ends in the summer and the projects happen in the summer. And, you know, it's not really the board's purview, but I would, given what was said today, I would question the reasonableness of that indicator going forward. But that's not a commentary on the report as of submitted year.
Thanks for that, John. I've been having conversations with John Bremer and Pete. We also have other fail-saves built into board policy, in particular OE 5 and OE 6, that require us to appropriately manage the overall district budget. That we, I think we would be willing to engage in that conversation if the board would like to potentially take a look at a tweak of that policy, that portion of the policy.
Any other questions, thoughts from the board about OE 12 report? Okay, we have a motion by Christopher and a second by Joe. After this discussion, is there, let me just rephrase. All those in favor, there we go. Too many votes tonight. All those in favor of approving OE 12 as presented as being in compliance signify with aye. Aye, any opposed? OE 12 has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for bearing that.
Yeah, same, right.
Worthwhile.
Yeah, and again, super, lots of information. And from OE 12, actually, I didn't elevate that to all of the data that's in Board Docs as well about all of the pieces for OE 12. We've talked sometimes that that is a little checkboxy-ish from a board perspective and the kind of year in, year out, but it's really helpful to have all that data. So thank you for that, too.
And again, I think even an example of John taking a closer look at survey data and ticket time, that work does not come to life without a board policy making us prove it every year. So even though it's checkboxy, it's all worthwhile.
Thank you. All right, moving on to board updates. Anything communications specific that anyone wants to elevate? Just a couple of reminders. We have our Greater Dane County Consortium gathering on Wednesday evening, open to the community, starting at 6:00 PM at Middleton High School. So hope to see some of you there and community members as well. We have seven state legislators coming that represent different areas of the Dane County area, talk a bit about school funding and other current concerns related to public schools and the state.
Sure. To the regard also, if you're talking to community members and you want to have a flyer for you, I can submit the copy of the flyer to you so you have that in hand or just handed directly to a community member as well.
Thank you. Reminder to board, end of year visits coming, so thanks for taking time to sign up. And thanks in advance, continue to leadership at the various sites. Super excited to be able to go school to school and hear in real time the data that we get to talk about at the board table and see it in practice and get to visit classrooms. So excited to continue those. And of course, celebrating Educator Appreciation Week. So educators look forward to a small token from the board as well later on this week. And then do we want to talk a bit about the training that we, who of us went to last week on Wednesday? Yeah, we had a coherent governance training workshop where there was time to collaborate and work with other districts. I was just there for the afternoon more workspace piece. But folks that were there, if anyone wants to elevate, Dr. Clarity were there, Amy Engelkins, we had Adam Singshaim, myself, Lori. So we just kind of each, I think, had takeaways from that time in terms of just talking about leadership and board partnership around coherent governance.
Yeah, appreciated the opportunity here from other districts who also have a coherent governance model and learning from them along the way, especially with the idea that we've been trying to rewrite some indicators and make sure that our results policies are actually matching and aligned for our values. So I was wondering if you and other districts were also engaged in some of that productive struggle but also to learn from.
Yeah, thanks.
In line with, it's good to be able to network with districts that are trying to determine, much like we are, how to appropriately measure where we deem soft skills, those things that are outside of the realm of our core academics. Things like critical thinking, reasoning skills, and things that we, as we talked about, would develop a student for a, to thrive in a diverse global society. It felt like the partnerships we were going to make, and just think about this as a collective with other boards and districts across the state, will enhance our ability to collaborate with the board on what that may look like. And I think we, the resources we were able to go, just didn't feel like we were having to build it from scratch in terms of understanding. And a little bit felt like, okay, well, most of the people are grappling with the same area on this. And so while we definitely were behind in the sense of, as a district, we were just trying to figure out how to best assess for those things that aren't frequently assessed for or not. Same thing that they're reporting to the state.
Yeah. Yeah, and I enjoyed the conversations from board members about just some of the functionings of boards and continuing an ongoing development as boards and things, all the same that I heard from Amy and Dr. Clarity, and then ways that we can continue to do some of our practices in different ways, better streamlined, et cetera. So I'm excited to workshop again and share some thoughts on things that we can continue to do in elevating our work as board members. Thanks for those that were able to attend. Anything else that anyone has for any general updates? All right, superintendent consent agenda, so the only item remaining would be personnel items. Just make sure that you've looked that over. Are there any questions? Hearing none, superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented. And similarly, the board's consent agenda this evening. Are there any questions? Hearing none, the board's consent agenda is approved as well. Future dates on your calendar, again, the Greater Dane County meeting is listed there. Graduation as well, I'm sure we'll have to sue an RSVP, but keep that date. It's always great to be able to celebrate our graduating scholars as a group this year on Sunday, yes, June 8th, which was per family feedback. Perfect, then we will adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub 1 sub G to confer with legal counsel who is providing advice concerning a strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which the district is likely to become involved, specifically concerning recent federal agency enforcement actions. We'll adjourn to closed session with roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Corby? John?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
I am aye as well. We'll adjourn to closed session. Thank you all. We'll take a short recess break.